We'll now move to proclamations, commendations, and other awards. I believe we have one that's going to be read today. Councilmember Amos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues for allowing us to do this. I'm just going to jump right into it because this is a very prestigious one that I'm doing today. It's a proclamation from the Atlanta City Council in recognition of the 75th anniversary of the Sadie G. Mays Health and Rehabilitation Center. Whereas the Atlanta City Council recognized the powerful history and significant contribution of the Sadie G. Mays Health and Rehabilitation Center, and whereas the center stands and operates as a tribute to Sadie Gray Mays, who emphasized tender and unrelated determination to help others. Born in great Georgia in 1900, she graduated from Payne College in Augusta and earned her master's degree from the University of Chicago. And whereas Sadie built a distinguished career as a social worker and professor before becoming the first lady of Morehouse College in 1940, her husband, the late Dr. Benjamin E. Mays, said she had a special concern for the young, age, disadvantaged, and the poor. And whereas in 1947, Sadie was elected president of the Interdenominational Committee to House the Age as a group established by Black women of faith to provide better care for the sick and homeless, the group later founded a nonprofit known as the Atlanta Association for Convalescent Age Persons Incorporated. And whereas by 1947, the organization selected the Old Battle Hill Sanatorium as the site of a new nursing home known as Happy Haven. In 1967, a new facility was constructed to contain 160 beds. In 1969, Sadie was admitted to Happy Haven, later passing away on October the 10th, 1969. Three years later, the Board of Directors elected to change the facility name to Sadie G. Mays Memorial Nursing Home in honor of its founder. And whereas in 1997, the name was modified to the Sadie G. Mays Health and Rehabilitation Center. More recently, it has been named to the U.S. News and World Report Best Nursing Homes. With a current staff of approximately 165 people, the center continued to renovate and grow and be a major employer in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta, do hereby recognize the contributions of the Sadie G. Mays Health and Rehabilitation Center on this 21st day of March, 2022, and applaud the center's tremendous efforts to meet today's health care needs. Normally, we would invite them up because of restrictions. Everyone here with Sadie G. Mays, if you would just stand or just wave your hand so you can be recognized, please. Thank you for everything you do for the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Amos. Mr. Clark, do we have any other proclamations, commendations, or other special awards?
None, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll now move to remarks by the public. objection, yes, we'll get you at the end. First up is Patricia Creighton.
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 Thank you. Good evening, afternoon. Council Chair, I would like to make sure that I've been granted four minutes, two minutes from Mr. Bishop John Lewis.
That's correct. You have four minutes.
Thank you. Greetings, everyone. I want to say first and foremost how grateful I am to be here, and all of us from the pandemic, that we are still alive. As you know, as you don't know, I'm general manager at People TV, and I've been there since 1987. And now they have taken the channel from us. They did not renew our agreement. So first on my list, I would like to know, the mayor's lobbyists told our people that the mayor signed an executive order not to renew People TV agreement. This is the first agreement we've had since 2013. It came in force 2021. I have not been able to find a copy of that, and I would like that foremost of anything, so I can go forward. But at the utilities meeting on Tuesday, I didn't know we were back coming in person. But after that meeting, after I watched that meeting in shock, I wrote a letter to the mayor and city council, and I do would like to read it because it curtails everything I had to say. I hope all is well, first and foremost, and the lack of respect shown by Ms. Lenise Harris has shown this council is tenfold towards People TV and myself. People TV is just uninformed that city council was in the not renewal of the contract. I got a phone call telling me that her and Adrian Coleman Tyler was at the utilities meeting speaking about People TV. I watched the meeting, like I said, in shock. Ms. Harris sent an email regarding a Zoom meeting on that very day at 1:00, making me think, and others, that this was the only way to communicate regarding what was happening at People TV. Ms. Harris is not telling the truth about things that went down in July 2017. The city of Atlanta requested a RFP, FC 9825 Public Access Channel Operation. People TV complied to that RFP. It was canceled. The next one went out in November 2017, FC 10166. In that RFP, there was a $75,000 allotment for the equipment to upgrade. The RFP was given to someone else by Ms. Katrina Taylor illegally because she, and as you found out, whoever they awarded to did not have a facility nor equipment to run public access channel for the city. The same situation Ms. Harris is in today, as she has taken the channel from People TV, that we have served this city for over 35 years. Ms. Harris spoke about how $180,000 is not enough to run People TV. I beg to differ. I've ran it for seven years on that $180,000, even though half of it went to rent. We also have producers paying for shows, classes. We had two people that just finished certification at People TV. We were doing what we were supposed to do, not in the manner that she thought maybe, but yes, we did. Ms. Harris had blocked us in the past from relocating for cheaper rent. When we were negotiating the contract in 2021, nine months it took to negotiate that contract, and Ms. Lenise Harris did not pay People TV one dime. Who works nine months and don't get paid? I had to fight, get a lawyer to get that money. And when I got it, she sent me an email, all capital letters. If I'm not understanding, my granddaughter told me, granted, she's screaming at you using capital letters, telling me to make arrangements on how the money was going to be brought, sent to me. Three months at a time, and we've gone without pay. We have just been getting the short end of the stick. Some of you council people have been here for 24 years and better and never set a foot at People TV.
Time has expired.
We are still open, and I invite you all to come down anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Pastor Curtis Harris.
Well, I'm not a pastor. Well, I am a pastor, but I'm a prophet first, not a pastor. There's a difference. Again, my name is Prophet Tony Curtis Harris Martin, like T.C. Martin. Now, again, I know some of y'all know me, some of y'all don't. Now, again, homelessness in Atlanta, Georgia, and the money that's been sent to Atlanta, Georgia, Fulton County, Cab County, does not get into these homeless people. Now, I'm talking to lawyers about this right now. We can do this the good way, we can do it the bad way. It's all good for me. Now, Antonio Muhammad, the guy that comes here, said he got discriminated against by Delta. So, Delta airplane. So, a white lady said to him not to go in the bathroom, she was going to move because she just didn't want to move. See, still the little things like that in Atlanta, Fulton County, Cab County. Rashad Brooks was killed by a police officer at Wendy's in his neighborhood. Rashad Brooks was killed by a police officer at Wendy's in his neighborhood. And we're still not happy about that. I'm not happy about that. Now, we say, now we've got four homosexual women or men on this council, and 40% of homeless people are gay boys and girls, youth. You didn't know that. See, I've been here for, I'm 51 years old. I've been doing this for 25 years, and I don't feel no way tired. I think Coretta Cosby said this, "We that believe in freedom shall not rest. We cannot rest." So if you don't like me now, you ain't going to like me in the future. This is my first time here. Remember I said last year that a pandemic was going to happen? Remember I said that? Remember I told you it was going to be no justice, no peace in Atlanta? Remember I told you it was going to be hard for you to get from here to your car? Remember I told you that? I told you that. And remember I told you that some of y'all ain't going to be here next year? And again, some of y'all ain't going to be here next four years. I told you I knew how to get you out this seat. And you don't believe me yet. You don't believe us yet. I can get you out that seat. I can get you off the force, too. I'm not playing. Nineteen folk died before the pandemic froze to death. And one of them died in front of Gateway. So you think I'm playing? Look at my face. I'm not playing. If I got to call you out by name, I will. If I got to tell these children that you're racist, I will. If I got to tell these children that you don't care about your people, I will.
Time has expired.
Y'all supposed to put time up and let me know when my time expired. Two minutes.
Thank you. Next up is James Davenport. Also, Mr. Davenport, just before you start, I just want to acknowledge that Councilmember Bond has joined us for the record.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Mr. President, for acknowledging me. Mr. Amos, another famous Bulldog graduate, Booker T. Washington High School, first given honor to God, who I oftentimes call my conductor. I don't have a PhD, but I do have a GED. As most of you know, my greatest interest is the first Black park in Atlanta, which happens to be Washington Park. Some of you do know that I tried to champion the cause of one of our late, great civil rights heroes in the name of Mr. Othello Chico Renfro Sr. That being said, I am also asking for a statue to be erected in his honor. One thing about Washington Park, Southwest Atlanta Men's Forty and Over Softball League plays at Washington Park, plays their games spring throughout the summer. Mr. Renfro was a part of that team. I am asking the council to actually waive the fee of these gentlemen. Most of these people are elderly. They paid their dues, not only due to the pandemic, but I think we owe it to them to salute them that they not have to continue paying nearly $3,000 a session. It's not right. I think you all should actually waive those amounts for them and let them know that you do appreciate them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next would be Mr. Ron Shakir. He has four minutes because of time yielded from Mr. Eric Tavar.
Greetings. My name is Ron Shakir. Appreciate the opportunity once again to meet y'all in person. I know a few of y'all from the past, and I'd like to say hello to those who are new to this council. This is a special place, a place that we have tried to come together and encourage right conduct and action for the citizens of Atlanta. These matters have not always been taken well because we are a city with the highest, with the greatest disparity of wealth any place in the country. We are a city who housing, who Media. She sent information to the NPUs, and some of y'all have checked. Ms. Harris has said that she put information out in social media. She sent information to the NPUs, and some of y'all have checked that. The NPUs is still trying to get their things together, and it's a good model, but it has not worked correctly, that we all know. And one of y'all said it was less than 1% of the public, and you are right. People TV is a voice to have historical presence. My father didn't come home and tell us about Jose Williams, but Jose Williams was tied to that station. That was the platform in which he talked from. He talked about Boom. I never heard of Boom before, Reverend Boom, until I got to Atlanta. But my father, when he got here ahead of us, he talked about Boom. I would like to see the voices, Black and white voices, who have not appointed not one person to the board in the last year or two, see where we can work together and make People TV the place and give it time. If it's broke, let's fix it. If we need to correct things, let's correct it. But your presence and your leadership, Mr. President, and other members of this council will make a play on a part of that. We have transportation issues that we had tried to talk about, that single lanes on Martin Luther King, and we was ignored. There's movement on Campania Road now that we being ignored on. Let this council do not destroy a place that we can have a voice, that your work can be even done better if we would have, don't take that voice away from us. Come on down to People TV. And then last point, there's nobody who have had a person who wanted to be on that board of People TV who has been turned away. No nonprofit can knock on that door and they can be a part of People TV. We do not need a complete overhaul at People TV. We need support at People TV. Love y'all, appreciate your success, and hope it be for the betterment of our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Abdul K. Sabra.
Sabir.
Sabir.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. Ms. Patricia, she was a producer of Mr. Hosea William program. And that's a change that connect back to a lot of, Mr. Hosea William connected to a lot of other people. We are familiar with a person that we went to school with said that Mr. Hosea William, Mr. Boom, them helped them maintain their job at Sears &amp; Roebuck years ago over there in West End. They were active in the community. And there was another person that was on one of the programs that was interviewed, Dr. Charles King. In his psychology, he was one that agitated for the people to come together to look at some of the things that we consider is really dark part of our personalities. But he was on public asset also, Dr. Charles King. The station itself has a history to, before you make any decision, we would appeal to you to talk to her and get some history of the station. And actually, the station is somewhat of an asset to the city. It's that you have no true democracy unless you have an informed citizen. And so we want to be in the form of a human being. And that's what people television advocate in this name. It want to be human beings. We don't want to be dogs. We don't want to be Lil Bow Wow. We want to be human beings. And so we believe that people television will encourage the people to be human beings. And some of the things that people are doing nowadays, dogs would be ashamed for them to use the name dog. So, but people television have persons and people that has advocated for the high morals of this society.
Time is expired.
Hosea William, he worked with Mr. Montford. Mr. Montford used to operate the Magic Market, feeding the hungry. Mr. Montford was one of the person that used to help Mr. Hosea William feed the hungry. So that was a conjunction. And Mr. Hosea William said once that he drank out of a water fountain, and he was beat to left or dead.
Time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we've added Henry Jordan to the list.
Give it out to the Spirit of Christ. My name is Omni Jordan. For the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life. To Jesus Christ our Lord, Romans 6:23. My prayer is Jesus, give me the gift of wages that produces eternal life, and kill the wages in me that produces death. James Montgomery, desire wages that produce death. For to be currently minded is death, but to be spiritually minded is life and peace, Romans 8:6. To be currently minded means to have once life dominated by sin nature. To be spiritually minded, it should be controlled by the Holy Spirit. My flesh create the income. It was obedience to Jesus, Holy Spirit, that created the income. Obeying your flesh will not create the income. Behold the high of the labors who have reaped down your fields, which is of you kept back by fraud, crier. And the cries of them which have reaped are entered into the ears of the Lord of Sabbath, James 5, chapter 4, verse. The Lord of Sabbath mean the Lord of hosts, of armies, describes the omnipotent avenging character of the God who sees and hears injustice. When you fail to give me the income Jesus created in me, you also work against the income and the gift, the operation of the gift. Curse ye merrows, said the angel of the Lord. Curse ye bitterly the inhabitants thereof, because they came not to help of the Lord, to help of the Lord against the mighty, Job 5, chapter 23rd verse. It is God we are to help people, that the mighty seeks to destroy. Christ, give me the power to stand against the mighty that seeks to destroy, me and others, by your spirit and your word, Christ. When you put your behind and my face, then you work against the spirit of Jesus Christ. Christ called us to love one another, not to mistreat one another. And to practice hatred is sin.
Thank you. I want to thank all members of the public who have come to speak. Mr. Lewis, I believe you wanted to make a brief comment.
My comment was to Mrs. Creighton. I got your email. You have my full attention. I appreciate you for adding context to what we heard last week. And I'll be, my office will be reaching out to you to set up a meeting ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to the report of the Journal. Mr. Clark.
I, Forrest Willard III, municipal clerk, do certify that the action minutes of the March 7, 2022, city council meeting are true and correct.
Do I have a motion to adopt? Move by Ms. Bakhtiari, seconded by Juan. Any discussion? Mr. Clark, please open the vote on the adoption of the minutes.
Please hold. From President Doug Shipman, appointing Ms. Nedra Dedwiler to serve as a member of the Atlanta Urban Design Commission in the urban planner category. This appointment is for a term of three years. Staff recommendation to refer to Community Development, Human Services Committee, and Committee on Council.
Let all three items follow that course. Please proceed.
Mr. President, if I found items four and five is blocked.
Please proceed.
22-C-5044, a communication from Cooley Greenwood, interim general manager, Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, submitting the appointment of Chief Michael Scott Crer to serve as a member of the Public Safety Commission. 22-C-5045, a communication from Byron Amos, District 3, appointing Mr. Dwayne Martin to serve as a member of the Alcohol Technical Advisory Group, ATAG 3. Staff recommendation to refer to Public Safety and Legal Administration and Committee on Council.
Let both items follow that course. Please proceed.
22-C-5046, a communication from President Doug Shipman, appointing Mr. Phil
All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda without the two items that have been called out. It's been moved by Ms. Bakhtiari. It's been seconded by Mr. Juan. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt Section 1 with the removal of the two items as noted.
Please hold. The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote? Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. The consent agenda, Section 1, is adopted. Mr. Juan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to move 22-01191 to the mayor's office post haste. 31. First item is 22-01091, a substitute ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the chief financial officer on behalf of the Department of Transportation to transfer and deposit funds generated from fees associated with abandonments, encroachments, and right-of-way dining to the encroachment and abandonment fund project number listed and for other purposes. Motion from the committee is to file.
A motion to file. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file 22-01091.
The vote is open.
The Department of Transportation to transfer and deposit funds generated from fees associated with abandonments, encroachments, and right-of-way dining to the encroachment and abandonment fund project number listed and for other purposes. Motion from the committee is to file.
A motion to file. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file 22-01091.
The vote is open. Vote is now closed. Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays. The motion to file is adopted. Mr. Juan, please proceed.
Mr. President, I'd like to take the next two items together, if I might.
Without objection. Proceed.
All right. Thank you. Item 22-0180, an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond authorizing the chief financial officer to allocate funds for a new pedestal for the Martin Luther King Jr. statue located at the intersection of North Side Drive and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Georgia State Capitol, from the 2022 infrastructure bonds for horizontal projects, council discretionary account, and for other purposes. And 22-0181, an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond authorizing the chief financial officer to allocate funds for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Piedmont Park, from the 2022 infrastructure bonds and for horizontal projects, council discretionary account, and for other purposes. Motion from the committee is to file both items.
There's a motion to file both 22-0180 and 22-0181. Is there any discussion on the motion to file both? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on filing both, on the motion to file both items. Nays, the motion to adopt passes. Mr. Juan, please proceed.
Next item is 22-R3256, a resolution by Councilmember Alex Wan, a [inaudible] instituted by Finance Executive Committee requesting that the mayor takes into consideration and funds priorities that the Atlanta City Council recommends being included in the FY 2023 budget and for other purposes. This was forwarded from committee with no recommendation. Therefore, I'll make a motion to adopt.
The motion by Mr. Juan to adopt 22-R3256, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Bakhtiari.
Mr. Shipman, I'd like to make another motion to amend by bringing forth this substitute that is being distributed right now.
Mr. Juan is making a motion to amend 22-R3256. That's being passed out right now. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hillis. I'll let everybody, I'll give a moment to everybody so they can receive that.
Colleagues, as you're receiving this and taking a look at it, I want to just give you a little background on how this was done. As you know, Ms. Kempson Wright solicited input from all council members who had time to submit their council budget priorities to her. We also discussed it in committee last week. Since then, we've taken everyone's submittals and kind of regrouped them so that as you look through them, you'll see headings and like budget items grouped together. We have endeavored to include everybody's
All right. There's a motion on the table to amend, as has been passed out. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Bond.
The two papers we just filed out of finance at the meeting, I said I wanted them listed on our priorities list. I don't see them on here.
Kempson Wright, I don't know if you heard, Ms. Kempson, there was, Mr. Bond is asking during committee, the two items that he had suggested for the two projects, I guess he had requested to add to the budget priority list. Mr. Bond, I'll have to apologize. I don't know. We're researching that.
Councilmember Bond, those items were not added to the priorities. These are the city's priorities for the policy framework, for the budget decisions and how the city resources are aligned to support these objectives. And I do not recall that actually being a request, so I do apologize if that's something we missed.
Well, it needs to be included because I stated it on the record. Yeah. There's actually three projects.
Mr. President, if I might, I suggest that we go ahead and bring the substitute forward and have Mr. Bond provide another amendment to add those and would act on that.
Yeah, Mr. Bond, I would, I would entertain a motion to amend the amendment with your provisions. Mr. Bond has offered a motion to amend the amendment that's on the table. Is there a second? I'm sorry, who's seconded? Mr. Winston has seconded. Do we have a copy of the, or can we get a copy of Mr. Bond's amendment?
Say if we can have Mr. Bond write that up and distribute it to council, I would suggest that we, while he's doing that, we'll just hold this to the side and then come back.
Be unanimous consent. Is there any objection to holding this item until we can get Mr. Bond's amendment? Without, without, without any objection, please read the count for unanimous consent on the motion to hold. Or postpone it. Apologize for motion to postpone it. Mr. Clerk.
Unanimous consent of members present is fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. We will postpone that item. Mr. Juan.
Mr. President, before I relinquish the floor, I just want to make one quick announcement. Colleagues, due to the annual Buckhead Coalition Luncheon scheduled for next Wednesday, March 30, the Finance Executive Committee will have a delayed start time of 2:30 PM here in council chambers. All right. Mr. President, that concludes my report. Until such time the amendment is prepared and distributed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Juan. We will now move to the report of the Committee on Counsel. Chair Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone. Please turn to page 35 on your agenda for the report of the Standing Committee of Committee on Counsel for item number one. Item 22-C-5033, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, reappointing Mr. Jeffrey Saxby to serve as a procurement appeals hearing officer on behalf of the City of Atlanta. This appointment is for a two term, two, two years to begin retroactively on August 19, 2021, and expire August 18, 2023. Colleagues, this item was found favorable. Motion to adopt.
Is there a motion in committee to adopt 22C-5033? Is there any discussion on the motion? Given this is a communication, without objection, we'll adopt this via unanimous consent. Any objections? Mr. Clerk, please sound the count.
Please hold. Unanimous consent of members present is fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Please proceed.
Item number two, communications from Mayor Andre Dickens, reappointing Mr. Pat Dixon Jr. to serve as a procurement appeals officer on behalf of the City of Atlanta. This appointment is for a term of two years to begin retroactively on August 19, 2021, and expire August 18, 2023. This item was found favorable. Motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt 22C-5034. Is there any discussion on the motion? Given this is a communication, without objection, we'll adopt via unanimous consent. Any objections? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please sound the count.
Please hold. Mr. President, before we move forward, item 22-C-5033 Mr. President, before we move forward, item 22-C-5033, unanimous consent was 14 yays, zero nays.
14 yays, zero nays on 22C-5033. Please let the record reflect.
Thank you. And currently unanimous consent of members present for 22-C-5034 is 15 yays, zero nays.
15 yays, zero nays. 22C-5034 is adopted. Please proceed, Ms. Boone. Given this is a communication, we'll adopt it via unanimous consent without objection. Any objections? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please sound the count.
Unanimous consent of members present is 14 yays, zero nays.
14 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Chair Boone.
Item 5, 22-C-5038, a communication from Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District 3, appointing Mr. Keith Lewis to serve as a member of the Atlanta Commission on Fatherhood, Men, and Boys. This appointment is for a term of two years. This item was found favorable. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt 22C-5038. Is there any discussion on the motion? Given this is a communication, we'll adopt via unanimous consent without objection. Any objections? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please sound the count.
Unanimous consent is 14 yays, zero nays.
14 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Chair Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, you will be receiving a handout regarding an updated version of where we are on our project with the boards and commissions vacancies. We would like to thank Chair Norwood, our clerk, Mr. Webb, and Mr. Brown for combining those items. Please email Mr. Webb and Mr. Brown with any updates or issues.
...talked about, too, that they were involved with, so now we have that information as a point of contact. The, the issue is, is that there are a lot of these that either are no longer being, are no longer meeting and... So you have 70 of the 127 that have not been confirmed as to when they're meeting. There are, on the last page, seven of these boards and authorities that we are recommending be sunset. Do look at that last page. Let us know if you have any issue with any of these being sunset. We have talked to the council member who, who put them together when we were able, when there was someone who is still here, who was involved in the creation of those seven. If there are any on the list that we have not been able to confirm that you personally feel no longer need to be in existence, either they haven't met in years or whatever, please let Chairwoman Boone and me know about that, and we will proceed to reduce... the number of vacancies throughout the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Norwood. Mr. President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Counsel.
Thank you so much. We'll next move to the report of the Zoning Committee.
So let's get started on our zoning committee report. Please turn your agendas to page 37. That's where we'll start. We'll start with our ordinances for second read. Item number one is legislation 22-O-1058 is zoning case number Z-21-93. It's 11, it's 1411, South Gordon Street, Southwest. The ordinance is to rezone from R4, which is single-family residential, to NC15, Westview, Westview Neighborhood Commercial District. This item was adversely in committee, and I make a motion to adverse.
A motion coming out of committee 22-O-1058, perverse. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will move to vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote.
Please hold. The vote is now open.
Hearing none will move to a vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt. Both items.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is now closed. 13 yays, zero nays. Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk.
We will be acknowledging Councilman Bond's affirmative vote, which will be 14 yays, zero nays.
14 yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt both items passes. Please proceed.
I would like to take items four and five as a block.
Without objection. Proceed.
Thank you. Item number four, 22-O-1079, zoning case number Z-21-116, location 62 Waverly Way, Northeast. And the ordinance is to rezone from R5HC20LSA1BL, which is two-family residential Inman Park Historic District Subarea 1 Beltline Overlay to MR4BCHC20LSA1BL, which is multifamily residential conditional Inman Park Historic District Subarea 1 Beltline Overlay. Number five, 22-O-1080, zoning number Z-21-117, location number 54 Waverly Way, Northeast. The ordinance is to rezone from I1HC20LSA2BL, which is light industrial Inman Park Historic District Subarea 2 Beltline Overlay to MR4BCHC20LSA2BL, multifamily residential conditional Inman Park Historic District Subarea Beltline Overlay, Subarea 2 Beltline Overlay. These items are favorable as amended out of committee. I make a motion to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt 22-O-1079 and 22-O-1080. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Verrokey is seconded.
Thanks.
Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt both items? Hearing none will move to a vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote to, on the motion to adopt both items.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Please vote. The vote is now closed. 15 yays, zero nays.
15 yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt both items passes. Chair Overstreet.
Thank you. We'll move on down to first reads. Items six through 11 are first reads, and I would like to take these as a block.
Without objection. Please proceed.
Thank you. Item six is 22-O-1232, zoning case number Z-22-09, location 889 McWilliams Road, Southeast. The ordinance is to rezone from R4, single-family residential, to R4A, single-family residential. Number seven, 22-O-1233, zoning case number Z-22-10, location 2333 Metropolitan Parkway, Southwest, 2360 Percerson's Road, and 622, 638, 648, and 658 Avery Road. The ordinance is to rezone from C2 Commercial Service District to MRC2C, mixed residential commercial conditional, to MRC2, mixed residential conditional. Number eight, 22-O-1234, zoning case number Z-22-11, 1355 Funston Street, Southwest is the location, and the ordinance is to rezone from PDH Plan Development Housing to PDH Plan Develop Housing for a major site plan amendment. Number nine, 22-O-1236, zoning case number Z-22-13, location 3049 Belmar Drive, Belmar Lane, Northwest. The ordinance is to rezone from R4, single-family residential, to R4A, single-family residential. Number 10, 22-O-1237, zoning case number U-22-02, location 203870 Redwine Road, Southwest. The ordinance grants a special use permit or an, for an outdoor aquatic recreation facility consisting of a public walking trail and a water ski venue. Number 11, 22-O-1235, zoning case number Z-22-12, location 3537, 3541, 3545, 3549, 3555, and 3565 Roxborough Road, Northwest, Northeast. The ordinance is to rezone from R3, single-family residential, to MR3, multifamily residential. The motion for items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 is to refer to ZRB and zoning committee. Mr. President.
There's a motion to refer all of the items listed to ZRB and zoning. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Norwood. Any discussion on the motion to refer? We'll adopt this by unanimous consent without objection. Any objections? Mr. Clerk, please sound the count.
Unanimous consent of members present is 15 yays, zero nays.
15 yays, zero nays. The motion to refer passes. Anything else?
Nope. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Overstreet. Let me just check. Councilmember Bond, I believe that the amendment has been outlined and distributed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Without any objection, we'll go back to the motions related to 22-R3256. All right. The motion that's on the table is the motion by Mr. Bond to amend. This is the amendment that has been distributed. Are there, is there any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President, for the benefit of the public...
Mr. Wong.
May I read the amendment, please?
Please do.
All right. It's, it amends the legislation to add the below project under the community development priorities for fiscal year 2023, and it lists three, Atlanta Student Movement Monument, Martin Luther Jr., Martin Luther King Jr. Statue, pedestal, and Vietnam Veterans Memorial.
Thank you.
No move.
The move to be adopted has already been seconded. Any discussion on the amendment only for Mr. Bond? Hearing none will move to vote on the amendment. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is now closed. 15 yays, zero nays.
15 yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt the amendment has passed. Now we will move back to the amendment that Mr. Wong distributed as amended by Mr. Bond's amendment. So the motion is to adopt the amendment. Is there any discussion on adopting that amendment? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt the amendment
The vote is... The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Please vote. The vote is now closed. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Sorry. Fifteen yays, zero nays. The motion to amend is adopted. We are now back to the main motion as amended, twenty-two R three-two-five-six as amended. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt?
Mr. President, so, is that correct? That previous screen says adopted as amended? It was, the actual motion was to amend. This net, this commens, this new motion on the floor is to adopt as amended?
We've had two amendments, just for clarification for everyone. We've had two amendments offered. Mr. Bond's amendment, which we adopted, that amended Mr. Wan's main amendment that he had offered. So now we just adopted the Mr. Wan's amendment, and now we're back to the motion to adopt R twenty-two R thirty-two fifty-six as it has been amended twice. So, any discussion on twenty-two R thirty-two fifty-six, the motion to adopt as it has been amended? All right. Hearing no discussion on the motion to adopt twenty-two R thirty-two fifty-six as amended. Mr. Clerk, can you please open the vote on the motion to adopt?
Please continue to hold. Please continue to hold. Please continue to hold. The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Please vote. The vote is now closed. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt passes.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Wan.
No, no. Thank you.
We'll now move to the report of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, Chair Hillis.
Thank you. Council President, we have two items that were pulled off the consent agenda. First item is twenty-two O twelve O four, an ordinance by Councilmember Mary R. Ferroki to amend Chapter Ten, Article Two, Section ten dash ninety-four of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances. In order to provide an exemption from the distance requirements to a public park set forth in Section ten dash eighty-eight B of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for on-premises consumption for one sixty-eight Lucky Street and for other purposes, the motion out of the committee was to adopt.
Been a motion to adopt twenty-two O twelve O four. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Ferroki. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote on the motion to adopt. Mr. Clerk, Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is now closed. Fourteen yays, one nay.
Fourteen yays, one nay. The motion to adopt passes. Chair Hillis?
Next item is twenty-two O twelve O seven, an ordinance by Councilmember Howard Shook to amend Chapter Ten, Article Two, Section ten dash ninety-two B of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to provide an exemption from the distance requirements for packaged stores licensed to sell malt beverages and/or wine by the package listed in Section ten dash eighty-eight point one of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for one retail grocery supermarket located at thirty-three thirty Piedmont Road, Northeast, and for other purposes, the motion out of the committee is to adopt.
It's been a motion out of committee to adopt twenty-two O twelve O seven. It doesn't need a second since it's coming out of committee favorably. Any discussion about the motion to adopt? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt twenty-two dash O dash twelve O seven.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Please vote. The vote is now closed. Twelve yays, one nay.
Twelve yays, one nay. The motion to adopt passes. Chair Hillis?
Thank you, Council President. That concludes the report of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee.
Thank you so much. We'll now move to the report of the City Utilities Committee, Chair Shook.
Thank you. We have no legislative items, Howard. By way of announcement, all cop, all members should have been copied on data about the extent as to how many vacancies we have in the Water Sewer Appeals Board. So let's please focus on that. Get those seats filled lest we have a whole lot of very upset citizens moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, today, we'll move to the Community Development Human Services Committee, Chair Dozier, for your report.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the first item that I have is twenty-two dash O dash ten forty-six, CDP twenty-one O fifty-six, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the twenty-twenty-one Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plans who has to re-designate property located at five thirty-four Springside Drive, Southeast, from the single-family residential land use designation to the low-density residential land use designation and for other purposes. So our committee action was actually to file, and I would like to make the motion to file.
It's been a motion out of committee to file twenty-two dash O dash ten forty-six. Is there any discussion on the motion to file? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file twenty-two O dash ten forty-six.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Please vote. The vote is now closed. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. The motion to file passes. Please continue.
All right. The next item that I have is twenty-two dash O dash eleven thirty-three, which is an ordinance by the Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the charter of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, adopted under and by virtue of the authority of the Municipal Home Rule Act of nineteen sixty-five, OCGA, Section thirty-five dash thirty-one dash one, as amended by amending Subpart B and related laws to Chapter Nine, Article Two, Division Three, Subdivision Two of the Urban Enterprises Zone, Sections nine through sixty-one through nine dash seventy-three of the Atlanta Code of Ordinances for the purpose of updating these sections with the language from the New Atlanta Urban Enterprise Zone Act and for other purposes. The committee action on this was favorable, and I would just say, too, this is a charter amendment, so this is actually the third and final reading of the charter amendment. And like I said, the committee action was favorable, and I'll want to make the motion to adopt.
Motion coming out of committee to adopt twenty-two dash O dash one-one-three-three. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Please vote. The vote is now closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt twenty-two dash O dash eleven thirty-three is passed. Please continue.
Mr. President, items three to seven are all CDP amendments and were favorable out of committee. If there are no objections, I would like to take these as a block.
Without objection. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that being said, I would like to make a motion to adopt items three through seven.
The motion to adopt items three through seven, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Norwood. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt these items? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt items three, four, five, six, and seven.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Please vote. The vote is now closed. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt the items passes. Chair Dozier?
Mr. President, that actually concludes my legislative items, but I do want to say just a quick announcement. Tomorrow, Tuesday, March twenty-second, at nine o'clock a.m., the Community Development Human Services Committee, jointly with the Finance Executive Committee, will be having a joint work session on the city's possible programs and funding and reimbursement policies right here in the city council chambers. That concludes my portion of the presentation.
Thank you. We will now move to item, personal papers and items for immediate consideration. We have a few. I'm going to begin with Councilmember Ferroki. I believe that you had a resolution for immediate consideration.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to be joined by Councilmember Bakhtiari. It's the first day of spring, which also signals the start of the new year for hundreds of millions of people around the country.
... by Iranian-Americans of all backgrounds, including those with Bahá'í, Christian, Jewish, Muslim, Zoroastrian, and nonreligious backgrounds.
And whereas Noruz embodies the tradition that each individual's thinking, speaking, and conduct should always be virtuous, and the ideal of compassion for our fellow human beings.
... lasting contributions of the Persian civilization to the world and the noteworthy impact of Iranian-Americans on the social and economic fabric of our welcoming international city.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, that the city recognizes the cultural and historical significance of Noruz.
Be it further resolved that the city expresses its appreciation for the contributions of Iranian-Americans to Atlanta.
Be it further resolved that the city recognizes the hopes and aspirations of all people, including the people of Iran, for human rights and religious tolerance as embodied in the spirit of Noruz.
Be it finally resolved that the city wishes Iranian-Americans and the people of Iran and all those who observe this holiday a prosperous new year.
Motion to approve.
It's been a motion to approve Elms ID twenty-nine, twenty-nine two eighty-eight. Is there a second?
I second.
Yes. It's been moved by Councilmember Ferroki. It's been seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, we will move to a vote on the motion to adopt Elms two-nine-two-eight-eight. Mr. Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is now closed. Populating votes? Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt passes. And let me just add Happy New Year to all those who celebrate. Mr. Bond, I believe that you have a few items for immediate consideration.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council have a resolution, Elms number two-nine-two-seven-seven, signed by all members of council. A resolution to condemn the invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation and Belarus to urge the immediate and peaceful resolution of the conflict between the Russian Federation and Belarus and Ukraine, to implore that the Atlanta sister cities to adopt similar such resolutions, to make statements urging the immediate peaceful resolution of the conflict between Russia, Belarus, the Russian Federation and Belarus and Ukraine, and for other purposes. Whereas on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, the Russian Federation began an illegal military invasion of Ukraine, whereas aggression by the armed forces of Russia against the sovereignty, territorial integrity, and political independence of Ukraine is contrary to the international peace order. And whereas the Russian military attacks on civilian facilities such as residences, schools, and hospitals, and the resulting civilian casualties, including women, older persons, persons with disabilities, and children, are cruel. persons, persons with disabilities, and children are cruel and indefensible. And whereas the unprovoked Russian invasion of Ukraine has created a deteriorating humanitarian situation in and around Ukraine with the increasing number of internally displaced persons and refugees in need of humanitarian assistance. And whereas the United States, I'm sorry, the United Nations overwhelmingly approved a resolution on March 2, 2022, demanding that Russia end the invasion of Ukraine by a vote of 141 to 5, with only Russia, Belarus, Syria, North Korea, and Antretia voting against the resolution, whereas the City of Atlanta recognizes the importance of maintaining and strengthening international peace founded upon freedom, equality, justice, and respect for human rights of the developing and friendly relations among nations, irrespective of their political, economic, and social systems, or their levels of their development. The City of Atlanta, the City Council of the City of Atlanta, Georgia hereby resolves that the City of Atlanta strongly condemns the invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation and Belarus and the resulting violations of international humanitarian law and the violations and abuses of human rights. Be it further resolved that the City of Atlanta urges the immediate peaceful resolution of the conflict between the Russian Federation and Ukraine through political dialogue, negotiations, mediation, and other peaceful means. Be it further resolved that each of the Atlanta sister cities is implored to adopt similar resolutions and make statements condemning Russian and Belarus aggression and urging an immediate peaceful resolution of the conflict between the Russian Federation, Belarus, and Ukraine. Be it finally resolved that all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith are hereby waived to the extent of the conflict, and I'll make a scribblers' addition, that it be finally further resolved that the municipal clerk send a copy of this resolution to all of our sister cities. And with that, I'd move approval.
There's a motion to adopt Elms 29277. There's a second by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Is there any discussion of the motion?
To urge all businesses, nonprofit organizations, and investors, including the City of Atlanta and all municipalities in Georgia, to divest from Russia and Ukraine in solidarity with Ukraine and to support the Ukrainian fight for freedom and democracy until there is a cessation of hostilities and for other purposes. Whereas on February 24, 2022, the Russian Federation began an illegal military invasion in Ukraine, and whereas the international community has united in opposition to this unprovoked Russian aggression, to levy an unprecedented array of sanctions that effectively cut off Moscow's major financial institutions from Western markets, whereas Russian banks' access to SWIFT's international payment system has been blocked, assets... freezes, and travel bans have been placed on Russian oligarchs, Russian oil and energy imports have been banned by the United States and other nations, and as exports to Russia of electronics, computers, military items, and other products have been forbidden by multiple nations. Whereas numerous states, cities, and local governing bodies across the United States have taken steps to respond to the ongoing Russian invasion of Ukraine by ending contracts with Russia entities, divesting dollars from Russian companies, and ending other relationships financially beneficial to Russia and Belarus. Now therefore, the Atlanta City Council of the City of Atlanta, Georgia hereby resolves that all businesses, nonprofit organizations, and investors based in the City of Atlanta and in the state of Georgia are urged to divest from Russia in solidarity with Ukraine and to help to support the Ukrainian fight for freedom and democracy until there is a cessation of hostilities. Be it further resolved that all resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict herewith are hereby waived to the extent of the conflict, I'd move approval.
There's a motion to adopt Elms 29279. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Amos, Mr. Lewis.
I want to make sure my name is added to this paper. I support it in full.
Is there any other, could we double check that, make sure that Mr. Lewis is on the paper as well? Any other discussion on the motion to adopt 29279? Hearing none. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is now closed. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt is passed. Mr. Bond.
I have a resolution, Elms Number 29294, signed by the majority members of the City Council. The resolution authorizes the City of Atlanta to partner with the HelloFresh and the Post One council member for their citywide initiatives with the Beyond the Box program and for the purposes. Whereas HelloFresh, the world's leading meal kit company, Pratt Industries, America's fifth-largest corrugated packaging company, and food rescue organization Second Helping Atlanta have teamed up to provide 8,000 meals per week to those facing food insecurity in Atlanta. Whereas HelloFresh Beyond the Box program advances the mission of changing the way people eat forever. HelloFresh has been able to provide food for Atlanta community members in need. Each box provided through the Beyond the Box program includes... USA, Pat Wilson, Commissioner of the Georgia Department of Economic Development, Council Member Michael Julian Bond of the City of Atlanta, and Andrea Jaron, Executive Director of Second Helpings Atlanta. HelloFresh marked this milestone that reinforces its partnership in the state of Georgia and in the commitment of making an impact in the communities that it serves. Whereas the Post One at Large council members considered a community part... with HelloFresh for these initiative, which provides food from the spectrum within the City of Atlanta, whereas the City of Atlanta has provided resources at onsite events, including volunteers from the Office of the Solicitor, Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, recruits, and Atlanta Police Department. Whereas the Post One at Large council member has incurred costs associated with supporting these initiatives, which provide citywide benefit to all constituents. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, that the City of Atlanta establishes itself as a partner with HelloFresh and the Post One at Large council member for their citywide initiatives with the Beyond the Box program that provides support for the local community. Be it further resolved that all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith be for the purpose, I'm sorry, should add another scribblers', be it finally resolved that this resolution is retroactive to August of 2021, and be it finally resolved that all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby waived for the purpose of the ordinance for the resolution only and for the extent of the conflict. I move approval.
It's been a motion by Mr. Bond to adopt 29, Elms 29294. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shook. Any discussion on the motion to adopt 29294? Mr. Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bond, a quick question. Should the end of the document that you just read refer to resolutions and parts of resolutions and not ordinances?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a scribblers' amendment to my paper to reflect that. Thanks for pointing that out.
Sure.
Any other discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt Elms 29294.
The vote is open. Will all members please vote? The vote is closed. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt passes. Mr. Bond?
That is the items I have for immediate consideration.
Thank you.
I can, I'm standing here.
I will if, let me just call for any others for immediate consideration that have been missed. Okay, with that said, Mr. Bond, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Have an ordinance signed by a majority of council members, an ordinance by, an ordinance authorizing the City of, and it's Elms Number, I don't see it, was authorizing the City of Atlanta to partner with HelloFresh and Post One at Large council member to donate blank to the citywide initiatives pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta Charter authorizing the mayor, his designee, and/or the chief financial officer to execute any documents or donation agreements necessary to effectuate the donation, authorizing the chief financial officer to charge and pay the donation authorized hereby from the account numbers here in listed and for other purposes.
Madam Deputy Clerk, I believe that's Elms 29295. Is that correct? Yes. Elms 29295 will be jointly referred to CDHS and the Finance Committee. Any other items?
That concludes the items for introduction, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bond.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President.
I can see a theme. Celebrating Norruz, I would like to ask Councilmember Faroki for any items that he would like to introduce today.
I have fewer papers than were itemized on the document that was handed out, but I'll start with Elms Number 29268, a resolution by Councilmember Amir Faroki, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute amendments to the project management agreements with the Midtown Business Association, Inc., DBA Midtown Alliance, for the following projects on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration Projects, 15th Street Extension Project, Piedmont Avenue Complete Street Project, 5th Street Complete Street Project, and the Midtown 13th Street Traffic Signals Project, with such amendments to accord with the provisions, qualifications, and performance criteria for CID procurement contained in Resolution 21R 4159 and for other purposes.
Elms 29268 will be referred to the Transportation Committee. Please proceed.
Elms Number 29278, an ordinance by Councilmember Amir Faroki, authorizing the mayor or his designee to install "Always Stop at the Intersections of Euclid Avenue Northeast and Waverly Way Northeast, Euclid Avenue Northeast and Hurt Street Northeast, Euclid Avenue Northeast and Waverly Way Northeast." It must be typed, but it's two of the same. I think it should be Northwest. So let me read this again. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to install "Always Stop at the Intersections of Euclid Avenue Northeast and Waverly Way Northeast, Euclid Avenue Northeast and Hurt Street Northeast, Euclid Avenue Northeast and Waverly Way Northeast," to authorize the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersections and for other purposes.
Elms 29278 will be referred to the Transportation Committee. Please proceed.
And then finally, Elms Number 29293, an ordinance by council members Amir Faroki and Alex Wong, an ordinance to temporarily suspend Sections 20-1008(c) and 20-1008(d) of the City of Atlanta's Code of Ordinances, only as they may be applied to short-term licenses or short-term rental operators that have not obtained a license, such that there shall be no authority to take administrative action or to impose an administrative action, excuse me, to impose any administrative penalties against short-term licenses, licensees, or short-term rental operators that have not obtained a license. To declare that the suspension of Sections 20-1008(c) and 20-1008(d) of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances provided herein shall only be in effect through June 1, 2022, and thereafter the suspension of Sections 20-1008(c) and 20-1008(d) of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances shall automatically end and beginning June 2, 2022, shall have no legal force or effect and for other purposes.
Elms 29293 will be referred to the Community Development Human Services Committee. Any other items?
Thank you. No, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakhtiari, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Council President. I only have two papers today. First is Elms Number 29272, an ordinance by council members Liliana Bakhtiari and Jason Winston, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to make the intersections of Glenwood Avenue Southeast and Hemlock Circle Southeast an "always stop controlled intersection," to authorize the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersections and for other purposes.
Elms 29272, we refer to the Transportation Committee. Please proceed.
Elms Number 29276, an ordinance by council member Liliana Bakhtiari, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to make the intersections of Hosea Williams Drive Northeast and Third Ave, Hosea Williams Drive Northeast and Carter Avenue Southeast, and Hosea Williams Drive Northeast and Daniel Avenue Northeast an "always stop controlled intersection," to authorize the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersections and for other purposes.
Elms 29276 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go in reverse alphabetical order, just for fun. Councilmember Winston.
I have two papers for consideration. I have Elms 29281, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason H. Winston, and ordinance to correct ordinance Number 21-00959, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on December 6, 2021, and approved by Operation of Law on April 28, 2021, by deleting the incorrect funding source and replacing it with the correct funding source and for other purposes.
Elms 29281 will be referred to the Transportation Committee. Please proceed.
Thank you. Elms Number 29261, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston, an ordinance to waive requirements of Chapter 2, Article 9, Division 1, Section 2-910 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, to authorize the mayor or his designee, including the Commissioner of the Department of City... of the Department of City Planning, to apply for a Georgia Smart Communities Challenge Grant from the Partnership for Exclusive Innovation.
My first item is Elms number 29291, an ordinance by councilmember Jason Dozier, Jason Winston, Keisha Sean Waits, and Liliana Bakhtiari, and Jason Winston, and an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee or the chief procurement officer or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to acquire from the Conservation Fund the over 75 acres of land which was the former site of the Chattahoochee Brick Company for the purpose, purposes of increasing parks, green space, and watershed land in the city, authorizing the mayor or his designee or the chief procurement officer or his designee on behalf of the city to execute all documents necessary to acquire the property, authorizing acquisition, due diligence, closing costs, signage, demolition, and site stabilization, waiving section 2-1541D of Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City Code of Ordinances and for other purposes.
Elms 29267 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
And my other item is Elms number 29296, an ordinance by councilmember Jason Dozier, amending the FY 2019 Emergency Solutions Grant Agreement with Gateway Center in the amount of $194,000, and transferring to Gateway Center from appropriations in an amount not to exceed $194,000 for the purpose of reprogramming Emergency Solutions Grant Funding to extend the contractual agreement with Gateway Center to ratify prior services and for other purposes.
Elms 29296 will be referred to the Community Development, uh, sure I have this right, the Community Development Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item, Elms number 29270, 29270, an ordinance by councilmember Andrea Boone, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Atlanta to accept a donation of $5,000.0 from South Face Energy Institute, Inc., for the purpose of applying to Georgia Power Company's Customer Renewable Supply Procurement Program to deposit the donated funds to the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein of, and for other purposes.
Elms 29270 will be referred to the Utilities Committee.
Elms number 29286, 29286, a resolution by councilmembers Andrea Boone, Keisha Sean Waits, Byron D. Amos, Marcy Kaya Overstreet, and Dustin Hillis, a resolution requesting that the Department of Human Resources develop a mandatory training module through the ATL Cloud Learning Management System for all supervisors of classified employees to ensure adherence to the requirements for the resolution of employee grievances as established in section 114-516 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, and the Department of Human Resources ensures grievance forms are directly accessible to all classified employees electronically through the city's Intranet and for other purposes.
Elms 29286 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Last item, Elms number 29284, 29284, a resolution by councilmember Andrea Boone to urge the Office of the Mayor and the Department of Enterprise Asset Management to join the international community and cities across the U.S. in recognizing World Sickle Cell Awareness Day and Sickle Cell Awareness Month by illuminating Atlanta City Hall and Hartsville-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes.
Elms 29284 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other papers for introduction today from any of the members? Hearing none will now move to general remarks. Any general remarks today?
I have a quick announcement.
Councilmember Dozier, and then we'll go to Councilmember Lewis.
So I'll be quick. I just want to announce that April 14, which is a Thursday, Atlanta City Council District 4 will be hosting our very first quarterly town hall. So we're just treating as a save the date right now as for trying to 100% lock in our location. The meeting will be both in person and virtual, so it will be hybrid, and also we will be providing childcare and food. So more to follow on the location, but hope to see the community out at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
I want to do a save the date, and I also want to shout out HBCUs today. I wear my HBCU tie any, the Sunday before my birthday because for the second year I'm having a fundraiser for my birthday to take students from District 12 to all of the HBCUs in the state of Georgia. All of our students made it to their second semester with over a 2.5 GPA, and I'm really proud of students having over, over a C average. So this Sunday is the second year in which we're going to be doing it. Our goal is to raise $20,000. We've already raised 15 of them, and the time is 11:00 a.m. The location is Ali Event Center, which sits in District 1, and we're, we're going to be raising money to take APS students to, to HBCUs in this state. Just want to make sure people knew about that for this Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise this afternoon to recognize and acknowledge the passing of distinguished Atlantan and fellow Georgian Mayor Sam Vassell, but I think it's also most fitting that during Women's History Month, we acknowledge Mayor Vassell's contributions in support of women. In 1971, Mayor Vassell appointed the first African-American woman to the Board of Alderman, and in 1973, Alderman Pinky Bradley ran successfully and won a seat on the board. So just want to recognize his contributions to women. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to announce that tomorrow at 6:30, my office will be co-hosting a Thomasville Heights Community Steering Committee meeting tomorrow that's open for the public. This meeting is also being hosted by the Community Foundation, City of Atlanta, the Mayor's Office, as well as other committee, uh, community stakeholders, and that meeting is tomorrow at the Thomasville Heights Recreation Center. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Overstreet.
I just want to shout out to MPUP and MPUR for a successful cleanup of Campbellton Road on Saturday. We cleaned up from, for the entire span of Campbellton Road of District 11, all the way from the edge where we meet City of South Fulton to Oakland City, District 12, and I just want to say thank you to all of the organizations that signed up and showed out. Princeton Lakes came with trucks to pick up the, a crazy number of orange bags full of trash. So my general remark is tell everyone that you see that the City of Atlanta wants to be clean. Let's make it so that when we have cleanup in our community, that we're not filling up so many trash bags of trash. Campbellton Road really did look great on Saturday, and I hope that it'll look great this Saturday.
proud of students having over a C average. So this Sunday is the second year in which we're going to be doing it. Our goal is to raise $20,000. We've already raised 15 of them, and the time is 11:00 a.m. The location is Ali Event Center, which sits in District 1. And we're going to be raising money to take APS students to HBCUs in this state. Just want to make sure people know about that for this Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise this afternoon to recognize and acknowledge the passing of distinguished Atlantan and fellow Georgian Mayor Sam Masell, but I think it's also most fitting that during Women's History Month, we acknowledge Mayor Masell's contributions in support of women. In 1971, Mayor Masell appointed the first African-American woman to the Board of Alderman. And in 1973, Alderman and Pinky Bradley ran successfully more than a seat on the board. So just want to recognize his contributions to women. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to announce that tomorrow at 6:30, my office will be co-hosting a Thomasville Heights Community Steering Committee meeting tomorrow that's open for the public. This meeting is also being hosted by the Community Foundation, City of Atlanta, the mayor's office, as well as other committee, uh, community stakeholders. And that meeting is tomorrow at the Thomasville Heights Recreation Center. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Overstreet.
I just want to shout out to MPUP and MPUR for a successful cleanup of Campbellton Road on Saturday. We cleaned up from, for the entire span of Campbellton Road of District 11, all the way from the edge where we meet City of South Fulton to Oakland City, District 12. And I just want to say thank you to all of the organizations that signed up and showed out. Princeton Lakes came with trucks to pick up the, a crazy number of orange bags full of trash. So my general remark is tell everyone that you see that the City of Atlanta wants to be clean. Let's make it so that when we have cleanup in our community that we're not filling up so many trash bags of trash. Campbellton Road really did look great on Saturday, and I hope that it'll look great this Saturday and the next Saturday and the next Saturday because we shouldn't be throwing our trash on the ground. So shout out to MPUP and MPUR for connecting with the community and keeping it clean. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Councilmember Hillis.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just want to take a minute to, in relation to the paper I introduced today, what the city's intent to purchase the Chattahoochee Riverlands, or the Chattahoochee Brick Land that is also incorporated in the Chattahoochee Riverlands study, that has been a long and hard road. I think my previous colleagues as well that served the last term with me. This goes back many, many years, many years, but seems that we are here. We'll be closing on that land soon. The details are still to be worked out in committee, but want to also thank Mayor Dickens for being a partner in this, our previous mayor, Mayor Bottoms, for carrying that flag when she was our mayor when this all began. Also want to thank our city attorney Nina Hickson and her team, especially Mr. Jonathan Futrell, for their work and diligence, not just in this this land deal, but, you know, they say, you can't fight the railroad, but we fought the railroad and we won. So want to thank them for their efforts and looking forward to seeing this go through committee and to finalize this deal and for the mayor to sign off on this deal and to bring 75 acres of green space along our river and truly know that Mayor Dickens will be the mayor that brings our city to its river, which is long overdue. And speaking of Mayor Dickens and the river, myself and Council, there we go again, always call him Councilmember Dickens. Mayor Dickens will be participating in the Sweep the Hooch event that is done yearly by the Chattahoochee Riverkeeper. Will be in the Grove Park neighborhood along Proctor Creek this coming Saturday, participating in their yearly cleanup of the Chattahoochee River and its tributaries. So thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer condolences to Coach Doug Smith of the CT Martin Recreation Center. He lost his mother on last week. Ms. Bernice Smith, who was a great Price High alumni. Price High was out in full force at her celebration of life. We want to extend condolences to Coach Doug Smith and the entire Parks and Recreation Department, and also a longtime resident, Mr. Sylvester Mitchell of the Adamsville Community, Clement Drive resident, 60 years, to Deborah, Melanie, Chucky, and the entire family. We will miss your father, Mr. Sylvester Mitchell, who worked for the United States Post Office over 30 years. Last but not least, thank you for your leadership, Mr. President. Thank you for a wonderful, fun, joyous occasion of camaraderie. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to announce that this week's HelloFresh event is going to be at the Cascade United Methodist Church at 3144 Cascade Road at 3:00 p.m. We'll be out there again with our partners, Second Helping Atlanta, Pratt Industries, and of course, HelloFresh. We want to thank them for their continuing effort to make this food available that impacts over 8,000 Atlantans a week. So if you are within the sound of my voice, if you don't need the benefit, please pass the word along to someone else. There's no prerequisite to receive this benefit. All you need to do is come. And we want to make sure that particularly now, as we are hopefully working our way out of the pandemic, now that the community is facing just inflation that is unprecedented in the last 40 years, you know, that is directly impacting food prices, that we're making this available to deserving families. And so if you don't need the benefit, please, the chances are somebody you know within your personal circle does, you know, please pass the information along. And we'll be out there at 3:00 p.m. at the Cascade United Methodist Church, again at 3144 Cascade Road at 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Faroki, I think that you wanted to give a remark.
Yeah, thank you. Next Thursday, March 31, for residents of District 2 or really anyone else who'd like to come, we'll be hosting a town hall at Dad's Garage in the old Fourth Ward, mix and mingle at 5:00, and the program will start at 6:00 and conclude at 7:00. Again, in person at Dad's Garage, March 31. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very quickly, in recognition of Women's History Month, just wanted to let everyone know that there is an effort underway to recognize the women legislators that have served here in City Hall. And I am working with Councilmembers Boone, Bond, and Wong on this, and I hope others will join in. But ultimately, our goal is to recognize all of the women legislators that have served this body. And so we'll have a save to date for you very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just take a moment to make one remark. We have a birthday today on, of a staff member who served Councilmember Mitchell, Council President Mitchell, Council President Moore, and who serves on my staff, Kathy Murray, who works diligently and has worked for many years. It is her birthday today. I don't think she's in the chamber, but she can see us. She is an asset to this city, as are so many who support our work on council.
Aries rule the world. Know that.
I second that.
That's right. That's right. That's right.
Any other, the, it's out of order to ask me to sing, Mr. Wan. Any other remarks? Hearing none. Can we, Madam Deputy Clerk, can we take the adjourned roll call, please?
Council President Doug Shipman.
Present.
Councilmembers at large, Michael Julian Bond.
Here.
Matt Westmoreland. Keisha Sean Waits. Councilmembers Jason Winston.
Present.
Amir Faroki. Byron D. Amos. Jason Dozier. Liliana Bakhtiari. Alex Wan. Howard Shook. Mary Norwood. Dustin Hillis. Andrea L. Boone. Marcy Colly Overstreet. Antonio Lewis.
Let's go home.
Entertained a motion to adjourn, moaned by Councilmember Bakhtiari, seconded by Councilmember Dozier. Without objection, we are adjourned.